Have they received the bulletin?
We heard at the last D P meeting that they were going, more than likely it's gonna be a goal.
I haven't heard from any developers and I know them.
Your mic is fixed.
We'll find out. Good morning, it's nine o'clock, I'm gonna call our county board meeting to order if you could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please Beth.
Sure, Commissioner Schlongen.
Please mark that unexcused.
Commissioner Heinem.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Please mark that excuse, he isn't with the A P O out in Washington.
Thank you, Commissioner Pop.
Here.
Alright, approval or amendments to our agenda, Monty?
We have no changes.
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
We have a motion of second to approve our agendas presented.
It works.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
It's carried.
County board meetings are broadcasted live and video recorded on YouTube, please refrain from speaking from the audience area and come to the podium so that viewers can hear you. County board observes Robert's Rules of Order for its meetings, so please obtain the board chair's consent before addressing the county board. Public comments are generally reserved for the open forum segment or public hearings, however, public comment on other agenda items may be allowed at the discretion of the chair. As we begin today, please turn off your cell phones or put them on vibrate, thank you. Open forum, anyone here?
Ed?
Not on open forum. Nothing, okay, thank you. Alright, move on to a consent agenda, we have two items, what are your wishes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion of second to approve the two consent agenda items, is there any further discussion? Hearing not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried. Move on to, Monty, recognition of mental health social workers Dustin Johnson, Victoria Blonigan, Alyssa Fennell, and Hannah Hindencamp.
Mr. Chair, I believe Nikki's gonna handle this for us.
Hi Nikki.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
Took my, already said the names of the people who are nominated for this.
Well, you go right ahead.
So we have two of the social workers here with us in the room, Sarah Dearhammer is also here, she had nominated them. This customer service award was stemming from an occurrence back in August when our homeless outreacher Victoria Blonigan had received a call stating that they had an encampment of ten to fifteen people that needed to be moved. And so Victoria along with Dustin Johnson, Alyssa Fennell, and Hannah Hindencamp had right away volunteered to go, they had moved the clients from a pretty steep embankment and encampment right on the east side of St. Cloud to a safe location over by Lincoln. They did this with respect to the clients, did great handling, handling the public and as a group, so we just submitted that customer service award and they had received it.
Awesome, can we have them come up for recognition?
Could we please?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Come on up you guys.
Friend's center.
Thank you, finally you guys.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much for your work. Thank you.
Alright.
You want me to talk? A little tall.
Just knock the chair.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Is Mr. Bird in attendance? Alright. I see Chris is not here yet, so.
Can't start mine.
How about if we?
You take my grant item if you'd like.
Okay, yep, let's do that.
That's how we review a state grant agreement. Yeah, sure. This is a pretty short, it's a pretty short item. So, Mr. Chair, of course we receive many state grants and have so for a long time, a lot of those are in human services. And it was my observation that oftentimes the state is reluctant to change its agreements. They have many sort of standard set agreements which they have historically shown unwillingness to make adjustments to. You know, these, these grant dollars fund many different programs in human services, staff time and so on. I think probably despite the fact that the state is unwilling to make some changes, we're probably gonna take the grant money anyway. That stands to reason, so I thought, you know, it's probably, it might be a better use of our county attorney's valuable time to forego reviewing these state grant agreements and instead focus their time on perhaps new agreements, agreements that are unique, more challenging. So I, I made that proposal to our county attorney Carl Schmidt, he conferred with our assistant county attorney Michelle and I believe another civil attorney in county attorney's office, and they were in agreement that this, this is, this is acceptable change. They, as you see in the next couple pages, you have a revised agenda item format. Most of the changes are at the bottom. Carl asked that we could include a checkbox, and you'll see that where it says state grant contract agreement not reviewed by county attorney. So they asked if, you know, the department isn't gonna submit that to the county attorney's office, they would check that, that would let the board know, hey, this, this was not reviewed, so Carl asked that we include that. That's really it, I, I took the opportunity to add another level of signatures, oftentimes an agenda might be prepared by a supervisor and then it goes to a department head, so it really should be signed by the person that originated it and the department head as well, so that just adds another signature line. So the county attorney's office is fine with the agenda form, and you've got one for county, county board and then one for human services board. So seeking board concurrence if this is an acceptable change in how we review agreements, I just wanna add to, I know Carl mentioned he has an attorney who's gonna be deployed for a year, so they'll be downing attorney and it's, the timing was good to, to shift their attention maybe to other, you know, again, more complex new agreements, that sort of thing, yeah.
Alright, thank you, any questions for Monty?
Mr. Chair, you know, Monty, I thank you for doing this, all these state grants, we don't need to keep tying them up, especially in human services, because they take forever to get through to sign even when it comes through me to sign. You know, this will be a faster process.
Hopefully gets rid of emails from them to the human services board chair and then to find out who it belongs to and.
Well, not like that, but we're tying up some of them, it's pretty, you know, repetitive and.
Right.
We're tying up a lot of Michelle's time looking at them.
Alright, any other questions for Monty or what are your wishes?
Make a motion to allow county departments to forego county attorney review of state grant agreement renewals with no changes in terms and conditions.
Alright, you heard a motion for that, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Alright, any other discussion? Hearing not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried, thank you. Monty, since we've still got about twenty minutes before we could even do human services, can we get to Amanda or you have somebody else coming or? Let's do that since Chris isn't here.
She does have somebody else coming.
You have somebody else coming? Oh, okay, then we'll wait.
Okay.
And I guess we're gonna hang tight.
You can do commission meeting updates.
We could do that.
Unusual for him to be.
Anything else or we can move around? Alright, whoever's ready would like to start, you have the floor when you're ready.
I guess I can start, I've had a fair amount last week, on Monday, actually it was more of a privilege than that, the library had all staff day. And so you got to go over and, and welcome the staff and sit, I sat through half the, the morning on what they review and that. They close all libraries for that, so there's no libraries open on that Monday, and it's required that you be there unless you have other employment on that day, then they let you out, and I think they said they had about two hundred and nine people showed up. Wow. Yeah. But they, they are getting, they get reimbursed mileage and on the salary for the day, so that was really good. Then we went back on Tuesday night to the library and we reviewed the, the book review process, two and a half hours worth. It's gonna come to a vote on the twenty first on what people really, you know, the process is that we've never taken a book out of the library, we've reclassified books, but they've never taken books strictly out of the library based on what they're, and we've got a couple people that are, feel real strongly about a couple books should be removed, but it's a long, no.
Public or members on board?
General public. And in all, there's no library in Minnesota that's ever removed a book. So, we'll see how that goes on the next meeting. And then I also had MICA on Wednesday, some of the things that came from MICA is, you know, they had bonding updates, we heard some of that yesterday. We had, they had a menship hearing. We had, spent a lot of time on community, some counties have a community supervision advisory committee, we don't have one of them in here, I don't think. And then our dues are gonna go up a little bit, not a whole lot on MICA, they're gonna use some of their reserves to pass that up, and it's basically gonna be what everybody else is doing, it's staff and comp thing. That was all that I had.
Okay, I think in order to stay on schedule, I'm gonna switch gears again because Chris is here and we're gonna move to our engineer, when you're ready, Chris.
Alright, good morning board, I apologize.
No problem, you were on time, we were just way early.
Well, don't worry, I'll put us behind.
That's kinda generally, happens anywhere, Chris.
Alright, okay, so the first item on the agenda. Actually, we're not ready for action today, the, for this today, but I will just talk about it and so for the future, bring this back as a consent item. And there it is. So, there was a plat approved in Benton County, A and G addition, and as part of that plat, we, we reviewed it, we negotiated access control across the, the road frontage, but provide a break in that access control where there was an existing access currently. Provide some context, this is Little Rock Road, our county state eight thirteen, County Road fifty-eight is to the west, previous plats denoted that this is a public, dedicated public roadway although not constructed, it's known as East Street on this previous plat. So there was a road access already constructed this location, so we approved the previous plat at this location. Well, as most things progress, this lot was sold to a landowner that was either not aware of the plat with this access control and break in access or did not want their access constructed in that location. They ended up, they getting a permit from us to, to widen the existing entrance in which we did grant them that, but they constructed it too wide, it was more or less like an eighty foot culvert in there and would have been probably about a sixty foot top that we would have maintained. We received comments and complaints from neighbors in the area that why are we allowing such a wide access? And so, our assistant Mark Lloyd Holt got in contact with the landowner, you know, informed that you did not construct to the permit and really worked hard to work out an agreement with them, and this is what the result was, is that, okay, we have this plat that's been recorded that says there should only be an access to this location, the access is violating the plat. But what we can do is have the plat modified, and they agreed to do that, they agreed to pay for some surveying, they actually paid for our county surveyor Witsat Consultants to draw up this sketch and modify the plat to, basically, we're gonna close off this access and then allow them to have a break in access control at this location where they would, they, they prefer to have their, their access. To accomplish that is by resolution, and then this, this sketch will be attached and recorded with the resolution when adopted. Before though, we do that, we ask the, the owners to sign this document requesting basically to have that access dedication moved and released. So this is what we're waiting on right now, we're waiting on this signature and, from the landowners. So, we believe proper procedure would be to have this request from the landowner signed and notarized first, and then have the board adopt the resolution amending the plat, so this would be what the, the new plat gets recorded for this lot one, block one of A and G addition.
Chris, did they say, the owners say why they wanted such a large entrance?
Well, they ended up building a shed-like structure here, so presumably they're bringing in, you know, trucks and trailers and they, they prefer to have more of a direct access into the shed and not maybe such a long driveway, so. You know, common request from us is like, oh, we need to have this wider driveway, and we, we push back sometimes, say, well, that's, that's wider than the roads that you drove on to get to that location, why do you really need that? And I don't know exactly why they wanted this at this location, but we negotiated this and we feel like this is a fair compromise that if they don't want it at the existing location, we'll, we'll allow it to be moved over there. And, and it does, way that they, this is not an aerial obviously, but they do have a, a building built here, it's more of like a direct driveway into their, their building.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm a little confused, I'm not following here, so if you're gonna take forty feet out of that, where's the new entrance?
It's gonna be at this location, so they're gonna have to, so right now, there was a narrow entrance constructed right here before they had bought this.
Yep.
At this corner, then they bought this lot and they got a permit to approve it, which we, we granted them to widen, widen the existing one, they went kinda above and beyond, so it kinda, this access probably spans into this break right here. So they'll, they'll have to come back and remove part of this access and make it an appropriate sized access at this location.
So you're saying at that break, that, at the breakpoint is when they're gonna widen out, is that what you mean?
No, there'll no longer be an access at this, this.
So where's the access then?
It's gonna be right here.
Where the forty feet is.
And so, these lots here have, there is a road, a township road that's constructed off of fifty-eight to the south.
Okay.
So, we're looking at this situation, we believe, okay, well, these acts, these lots do have access from the south, it's not super critical that they have direct access off of the county stated highway. So maybe that's, we can compromise and not have a shared access here, give this lot one of A and G plat, direct access onto Kasaw three, and this is where they prefer to have it.
Oh, okay, now I got, so you're coming off of thirteen.
Correct, correct, yes. So, they have constructed an access today off of thirteen, which we're okay allowing that access, just more appropriate sized and the, the location was negotiated and agreed upon by the, the landowners.
I got you now, Commissioner Pop.
So, how large was the access that they constructed?
Uh, literally it was like an eighty foot culvert, so like a sixty foot wide top, the Kasaw thirteen roadway up here is twenty-six feet wide.
I, I went past there and it's like, holy cow, we must have proved something here.
Yeah, and reality is, we did not, we approved something, that's not what we approved though, so, and, uh, we don't need to go check on things, sometimes neighbors will, will let us know.
So, do they have a residence there too?
I don't know if it's a residence, it is like a, a steel sided building with a garage door on the front.
Big doors, it has a fairly large door in the front.
Yeah.
Alright, any other questions for Chris, so this'll come back to us probably at the next meeting if you get the signatures.
Yeah, and if the board, maybe if I can just ask for a consensus, I'll just have it as a consent item the next board meeting then.
Yeah, I think as long as you have the signatures on there.
As long as you have the signatures and they were applied by the rules.
I, I agree, yeah.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that, Chris, make sure you do a double check out there though when you get everything signed.
Yeah.
Or you or Mark or somebody.
Um, I agree, we will do that.
So we have a motion of second to bring this back as a consent agenda item at, at the next available board meeting once signatures are received, is that correct? Yep.
That'd be correct.
Any other discussion on that motion? Hearing not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried, thanks Chris.
Alright, we'll move right into the next item. So as you may recall, we have some highway safety improvement program money coming to us to construct a roundabout at Mayhew Lake Road and our Kasaw twenty-nine. We need to use a consultant to design that, so we released a request for proposal over a month ago, we received four proposals, me and Mark Lloyd Holt, we reviewed those proposals, and we selected Stone Brook Engineering as having the best overall proposal. We rated it on four different criteria, experience, understanding of the project, staffing, and cost, so we didn't go with the lowest consultant cost, we chose somebody that was, they, they happened to be kind of in the middle. Uh, but we believe that they gave the best overall proposal, they demonstrated that they had a very good understanding of the project and the project requirements, I have attached their proposal here. Their staff is very, very experienced in building and designing roundabouts, very similar to ours on rural county roads, and so we, we selected them as just providing the best overall value. Like I said, we did receive four proposals, they're not the lowest, but they're certainly not the highest either with their fee, and their fee is attached here, so. Where's the total? Yeah, so, we're, we're requesting, we're not going forward with this geotechnical consultant at this, this time, so the seventy-three ninety can subtract off of there, and I think I have the correct total up here in my agenda item. Yeah, so, I get to this point, I'm asking the board to authorize awarding a contract and enter into contract negotiations with Stone Brook at a fee of a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, one ninety-six, one hundred.
Okay.
Mr. Chair. Chris, you wanna go a little further in depth that some of the other three did not completely put in their, in their proposals, all of the things we required?
Yeah, there was a, a couple things that was clarified by email to these four consultants, one of which is, Mark Lloyd Holt clarified with them that we expect them to complete any permit applications on, on our behalf and submit on our behalf. Some of the consultants had actually wrote in their proposals that they anticipate Benton County completing the proposals, or completing the permits only with their assistants, but that is a task that we really wanted them to do, just to kinda help us out with our workload, so put that into the proposal. Another thing is, we know and we believe it's, it's fairly well known that this is in an MS four area, municipal separate storm sewer, since we're in the urbanized area of the St. Cloud metro area, which puts additional storm water treatment requirements on it, and we believe that that's, at least I believe that that's a big part of this design, is designing systems that capture the storm water that run off the project and sending those to either treatment ponds or doing some kind of storm water treatment before it leaves the site. Some of the proposals, Floyd said that we, we anticipate no storm water treatment will be needed for this, this project, and I just think that's a bad assumption, especially if their fee is higher than this proposal, if we ask them to do that work, we can anticipate, you know, more fee needed to, to design that if that was not part of their original assumptions, so. We also, when we look at the price, we look at the, we asked them to submit a price proposal kinda in this, this format, they identify the different tasks, break out the hours, and then here's a lot more detail of breaking those tasks out, out more. And so we look at the number of hours that they plan on putting on the project, and this is where we have them identify the staff too, so we can look at their proposal and see, what's the staff's resume look like, do they have experience doing these kinds of things? And so we kinda also compare price per hour, they had a similar number of hours as the highest cost proposal, but with the lower fee, their cost per hour was a little bit lower, so that kinda gives us confidence too, is that like, if they're not putting enough hours to design the project, is that a potential contract amendment in the future if they don't have the design done, they've run out of hours to, to work on it? So we feel like Stone Brook gave an appropriate number of hours, because it was actually very similar to the highest cost proposal, but like I said, lower cost per hour, we believe we're getting a better value by going with this, this consultant here.
Chris, do you happen to have the range of those two, the four different ones, or not? And that's, that's fine, I see.
I can tell you that, that the highest proposal was over two hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Okay.
So.
Do you remember the lowest?
The lowest was, was just under one ninety-six, I mean, it's probably about one seventy-eight.
Okay.
So, so there was a range of, yeah, sixty thousand dollars, sixty, seventy thousand dollars between four proposals.
Alright.
Mr. Chair, being involved with us with the H SIP and this roundabout, I had the luxury of looking through these proposals too with Chris and to have an understanding of how clear Stone Brook laid everything out versus all the other competitors that bid on this, so I was real comfortable with this one.
Good, alright.
So, I, yeah, as typical with us, we would have the vendor sign the contract first, but once again, I look for, maybe just a consensus that you're okay with this and we'll enter to, you know, contract negotiations and, and get a signed contract from them and bring it back at a.
As a consent agenda item again?
Yeah, as another consent item.
I'm okay with that.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Motion of second, consensus to get this contract signed and back to us at the next available board meeting and put it on the consent agenda for approval, any other discussion?
So, what is the total cost of this gonna be when we're all done? I mean, we got a bunch of money, but we're not gonna be totally off the hook, are we?
Yeah, we only got seven hundred and fifty thousand, I'm sorry, Chris, go ahead.
Yeah, no, you're correct, Mr. Chair, that, this grant program had a maximum award amount of seven hundred and fifty, so we got the maximum that we can get from this, and this is probably gonna be, construction cost is gonna be in the range of probably two million dollars, so. It's on the future Kasaw twenty-nine corridor, which is, which is a project that's identified in our sales tax resolution, so that's a definitely a possible source of, and I think that's how it's in the five-year plan is the remainder being funded with, with sales tax, so.
And, and it'll be built with the anticipation that the twenty-nine corridor will go through, correct?
Correct, that's how we, yeah, we need to construct it. Correct, that's how we, yeah, we need to construct it, um, and anticipation, we're gonna have to take what we learned from the Mayhew Lake Road study going south. So that, yeah, that roundabout had to be designed with those considerations.
The, the whole idea is design it big enough so that in the future, if it turns into four lanes going north, it's already built for it. Correct, Chris? At least that's what I laid out with.
Yeah.
Chris, my expectations.
So, yeah, that's, that's something that, yeah, well, as designed, you know, built it for today's needs, but the ability to expand and for the future as well, so.
And we should find out when the government gets.
Their act together?
Their act together, or whatever, if we're actually gonna get the funding for the twenty-nine corridor.
Yeah. Alright, any other discussion, motion and second on the floor? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried. Alright, and engineers update.
Alright, so it's been a, a while since I provided an update, so several things, uh, I wanna talk about. This is just an example, this is just the cover sheet of our Kasaw seven reconstruction plan. So we're, we've got ninety percent, uh, plans complete, so not, the design is ninety percent done. Uh, Lloyd Holt's been reviewing these, uh, before they get to be final plans, I'll need to review them as well, so I can, I can sign off on them. Uh, but, uh, we have all got our appraisals in for all the additional right of way that we need. Uh, based on the value, we have about ten parcels that we're gonna go out and get a review appraisal completed on as well. So, uh, we're kinda using, you know, ten thousand dollars is our threshold. So if the appraisal came back, uh, as a total, uh, acquisition price of more than ten thousand dollars, we're getting a review done by another appraisal to just make sure that that's fair, um, and reasonable. So, those are, the reviews are being done right now, um, and Lloyd Holt's been going through those the last couple of weeks. Uh, we anticipate to offer letters to be going out, uh, soon. I do wanna direct your attention to one, uh, parcel that's gonna be a challenge. Uh, happens to be owned by the state of Minnesota, uh, DNR, it's the Bible Duck Slough. So, early coordination with them, um, you don't actually work with the DNR, you have to go through the State Bureau of Land Management. Uh, they said, oh, it's probably at least a year out before we could get anything, uh, done with you. So, um, we're not halting the project be- based on this, we're gonna continue moving forward. But, yeah, there's, we, we would like additional road right of way, um, in this area. Uh, if you're familiar with the area, like I said, this is what's known as the Bible Duck Slough, um, big wetland area. Um, we'll just have to continue navigating that and we're gonna continue with the design and the acquisition of the other parcels. Um, and, and, yeah, we've got options that we could still explore, um, I would think, but, um, in the ideal world, it would be nice to have a consistent right of way width, we're, we're acquiring the same width on either side of this parcel. Actually, this is a parcel as well, this is parcel fifteen in our Platte. Um, don't know the history of why, there's a s- little sliver of, uh, DNR land here too, but there, so there's actually two parcels um, that we need to acquire, but consistent right of way width, that's just something to be aware of that we could have everything done and ready to go and still not have a signed agreement from the, the state of Minnesota.
Big is that parcel, Chris? Twenty acres or more?
Have that, so, yeah, we are just under a quarter mile at twenty-seven, uh, feet. So, yeah, that, that's just under a quarter mile, or quarter acre, so. Not, uh, but.
It's ironic of how, uh, quickly we have to move.
And they don't.
State wants the right of way for a road or something versus us wanting a right of way.
And I would imagine we gotta pay them or have a two to one match, right?
Well, yeah, so we've already done wetland delineation, we're prepared to go down that road of, uh, replacing those wetlands, uh, through the local road wetland bank, um, yeah, it's just the fact of just having that easement in the highway name for highway purposes may, may be a challenge.
So are we, are we creating wetlands or replacing, or are we just flat out buying?
Um, so I think in most of the cases, we're gonna be, yeah, have to mitigate, meaning we're gonna have to replace them, so. There are some, some types, I think, what, what, um, are considered wet ditches, that it's a wet ditch now, although we're reconstructing it and we're gonna fill here, we might try to argue that it's gonna return to a wet ditch just farther out. And that acreage may be able to be, I know, offset and not mitigated, but, um, um, yeah, we have a whole wetland delineation report completed and, um, we're prepared to go down that route of drawing from the local road wetland replacement bank. So I know some of your work, Commissioner Pop, on MICA, you hear about that, fully funding that, and that's where would really benefit a project like us is having that local, local road wetland replacement bank fully funded, so we don't have to pay out of pocket. We can draw from that, that statewide bank, um, because it's for a local road purpose.
That was, for those that were there, that's what I was getting at yesterday, was that if I wanna fill in a wetland, I only gotta buy one for one, and it's about, they're charging about ten thousand an acre. To, to agriculture.
Okay.
And so if I buy four acres, I pay forty thousand dollars, I can fill in the wetland, no question asked.
Yeah.
We go to do it as a government entity, a county, trying to make a road, which everybody uses way more than farmer A. And we have to pay two times the money, and I think the last iron, weren't they, like, they were getting like eighty thousand in the credit?
Yeah, w- we know through our ditch work, ditch nine, we have to mitigate for point zero six acres. Uh, the wetland bank that we found, that's a similar type, I mean, there's all kinds of requirements, you can't just pick any bank. It was ninety-five thousand dollars an acre, plus fees.
So it's a little over two bucks a foot.
Yes, it is, and, and, and you're right, i- in public entities, we're having to replace it two to one.
And that's all Bowser.
So, yeah.
I mean, it all belongs to Bowser, and you can, you, you question him and you ask him like that, and they look at you like, oh, I don't know anything about that, well, the crap you don't.
Yeah.
You know, you're the people that are enforcing this.
So is TEP and everything involved in this too then?
Yes, they, yes, they, yeah, so.
Yeah.
Alright, uh, other designs, so we're, we're, uh, moving right along with our, uh, Gilman design. Um, Commissioner Johnson and I will be at the city council meeting tonight, um, hopefully trying to stir up, uh, some state interest in funding their project. Um, I also wanna talk to the city of Gilman, what we would like to propose is actually gonna result in a little bit narrow pavement out there. So just for example, Kasaw three, um, it's forty-four feet from curb face to curb face, which is very wide for a two lane roadway. Um, we're kinda actually proposing to narrow that up by two feet on each side. Um, that should give us a little bit more space in front of the houses to the curb, create some more green space. Part of this has some sidewalk on, um, County Road five, that'll help us with that. Um, and, uh, yeah, I like to think it also provides a traffic calming effect. Uh, numerous studies have shown that regardless of signs, drivers tend to drive the speed they feel most comfortable at. So, there is a concept known as traffic calming, and one of those tactics is to, to narrow the roadway. Um, this width, I still would think would provide us, well, does, provide us still with parallel parking and still have a wide enough through lanes, uh, one in each direction. So Kasaw five is actually, uh, wider, it's, it's twenty-six to twenty-seven feet in each lane. So we're pushing, uh, it's over fifty feet wide, once again, go down to twenty foot wide lanes in each direction. So you still got room for parallel parking and a full twelve foot, uh, driving lane to go through there. Um, there is sidewalk on five that's existing, so our policy is if it's existing, we'll replace it at our cost. Um, so narrowing that roadway up helps us with grades, uh, along Kasaw five, there's some buildings and houses that, that are really close to the curb line today, that if we move that curb line out, will help us with that, and once again, I think, help with, with speeds in town tr- that traffic calming effect.
Chris, how does that line up with Kasaw five on the east end of town where it's gonna meet up with, you know, as it heads out into the county?
Yeah, so, yeah, we're gonna, actually, this project will take us probably to the east side of the cemetery there by the church, and that should line up where, where our reclaimed project was a couple of years ago. So, we're building it on the same center line, so the outside widths will come in and it should match up better. Um, and that's basically where the curb and gutter stops as well, so then it goes into open ditches to the east, so.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Heinen.
So is this what you're gonna propose to them tonight, or have they seen this yet?
They have not seen this, so this is something that they'll see for the first time, uh, tonight. Ultimately, before we go to bid, it, since it is a municipality, um, I have to get what's called municipal consent.
Yeah.
So I have to come back to them, um, when plans are finalized, um, have them sign a resolution saying that they, they concur with this, this project, but. We also need to get their, their, their utilities funded, so.
That was my next question, they ain't even closed that, that part, are they? I mean.
Uh, Commissioner, uh, Representative Schultz will be there tonight too, because like Chris said, they're gonna be seeking some state bonding, I think.
They're gonna try and bond for it.
They're gonna have to.
They're gonna have to.
The rural development application is somewhat dead in the water from what I understand, I don't know that it's finished, but.
Yeah. Things are tied up in the same kinda budget, federal budget, uh, stuff that all of us are, so.
So as we move forward of ARPA discussion, that's gonna be another part of the ARPA discussion, because we've had past discussion of the hundred and seventy-six grand towards their application. So, but if the application is gonna fall out of bed, then what's, what do we do next? So, there's ARPA discussion coming yet. This is one example of it.
I, I'm hoping Representative Schultz has to drive across our roads. Just to try to put on the importance of the project, so we wanna be a good partner with Gilman and, and do things at the right time, at the same time.
Um, right, he, he did share with me earlier that even if this all the stars aligned, it would be the end of next summer before there's any bonding money.
Yeah.
So, we're gonna have further discussion about Kasaw three and five and where it's gonna take us.
What's the closest, um, Democrat representative we got in the area, a bit, better chance of getting it passed if we want that.
Pretty big circle, I think. Probably drop pretty big circle.
Yeah, because that'll never fly coming from the Republican side. I mean, that's been a given for that, all the way through.
We'll see.
Yeah.
Alright, uh, meetings I've had, so, uh, about ten days ago on the seventh, I got to meet with the superintendent of Foley Schools to talk about, uh, uh, our County Road forty-three by the ball fields there, um, we know that there's some concerns with speed. So we talked about installing, um, uh, school zone speed limit, a sign. Uh, oh, can I not rotate this? That's right. Um, but it would look very similar to this, we'd have the speed limit sign, a flashing beacon, it'd be solar powered on that, we had got some estimates. Um, and we're looking about ten thousand five hundred dollars to put up two signs, one on kinda the, uh, just north of Fieldhouse Road, one just south of Penn to kinda capture traffic as they come, come through there. Um, there just did seem to be some willingness to contribute to costs on that, so, um, uh, this dollar amount, she thinks that, uh, maybe that's something that can be found in the budget, so I think we're gonna try to work on, try to get something still up this fall before ground freezes up, so. We did get some additional costs, Mayhew Lake Road by Sock Rapids High School has, uh, speed limit signs.
Yep.
Uh, that's another ten thousand dollars to add those signs to this, so we, we'd be looking at over twenty, twenty thousand. I was hoping to get maybe a fifty fifty cost share, which at ten thousand five hundred, they seem to be open to. Adding another ten thousand was not such an easy, um, easy thing for the school district to, to swallow, so. That's what we're looking at, maybe we'll just move forward with at least these signs, and then, you know, when that light's flashing, you should be driving at slower speed, and that may be twenty-five miles an hour. And then law enforcement can easily enforce that, if it's flashing, um, even though you don't have the, the radar to tell people how they're driving, if they're out there with their own radars, um, uh, you know, it's definitive, what's, when, when, and, and how fast you should be going, so.
Commissioner Pop, do you have a question?
I kinda answered it on the Sock Rapids ones.
Okay.
Cause as you're coming in there, boy, you can be closing a lawn and you see that school sign, it's kinda, it flashes, that one does too, ain't they the same as this?
Yeah, this would be almost identical, um, we would, we, I recommend get this, this blink link is what they call it, it's Bluetooth enabled. Sock Rapids, uh, used to have somebody that could change that, because we wanted them to have the ability, if there's an event at night that they anticipate a lot of traffic, maybe, maybe that's something outside of normal school hours, you wanna be able to change that, uh, to flash that, and I wanted Foley Schools to be able to have that uh, ability as well, I, I know even throughout the school year, start times and end times vary due to different reasons, so, um, having the same time every day may not make sense, so having, letting them have the ability to change that time could be beneficial.
So Dr. Perry was open to a fifty fifty split?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Heinen.
Chris, I know there's a grant out there for this stuff too, did you see that come through, your email?
So I think, are you talking Safe Rocks to Schools?
Uh, no, there was a different grant just for this stuff.
Uh, maybe it's act.
Two weeks ago, I think I seen it. And, and when I look through my phone again, I will, uh.
There's been a lot of grants that have come out recently, there's, there's active transportation, which is a federal grant, then there's transportation alternatives, which is state money, those can be used together in the same project, some, um, and then there's Safe Rocks to School grants, so it could be one of those that I've seen and maybe didn't immediately click that this, this could be applicable to that, so.
Yeah, so I, I read on that and seen that, that it's applicable for this, for these signs.
A- and maybe that's a viable option, the only downside would be then, then we can't implement it right away. We have to wait till we hear back from the grant and get the grant award before we could, uh, expend any costs, so. Um, but yeah, I just wanted to let you know that, that we have had those conversations and there seems to be willingness on their part to, to do something along these lines, so.
Great.
Uh, and one more thing before I go, a little bragging session, and, um, uh, Mr. Henninger knows about this too, he's gonna hopefully do an interview tomorrow, so we had, uh, one of our snowplow drivers compete recently at a national snow plowing, uh, rodeo in Colorado. And he got to go to this in Colorado because he placed very well last year at the, the local, uh, maintenance expo where they had a, a truck rodeo in St. Cloud last year. So, our snowplow operator, uh, Terry Thorston ended up placing first. It was actually a team event, uh, with this operator from Shosago County, but there's him and his, his teammate uh, out in Colorado holding the, the first place trophy, so, uh, he's number one in the nation for driving a, a snowplow through this, this course, so. Opportunity to brag, I think it's safe to say that we have some of the best snowplow drivers in the country right here in Benton, yeah, so.
Awesome.
Yeah, so I think he's, I don't know if he, he's not the type to brag, but I don't know how he, I don't know if he's excited for the interview, but I'm hoping that tomorrow and there's a big write-up, uh, with his picture in the paper about that, so.
So, one trophy, are we gonna have to saw that baby in half?
That's right, maybe we'll have to share custody of it or something, so.
Awesome. Yeah.
So those are some things I, uh, prepared, um, oh, actually, I do have one more thing, uh, Monty and I were discussing this. So we mentioned Kasaw twenty-nine corridor, and maybe we need to have future discussions on where that goes. One of the things we did do this summer, we did send out letters informing them of lease agreements. We don't have signed agreements right now, uh, I have spoken to one individual who sells insurance and sells farm insurance. He does represent most of the landowners along that corridor, and he has some issues with our lease terms, uh, about the county being an additional insured on, on their insurance requirements, so that's kinda where it's, where it stalled out, we still need to work through that, um, but, um, we will be, uh, undergoing design, I do have an RFP just released to look for a consultant to, to design that project. So, it's quite conceivable, next spring, we would need surveyors out there to start collecting surveying data, uh, on that property, so. Um, eh, I think we're closer than we ever have been right now to actually constructing it, so it, it does place a higher importance on getting something in place, or just at least in understanding that, you know, that is county owned property, that we are gonna move forward with constructing a roadway on that.
So, have you heard from, have you heard from Jared at all?
Jared.
He's in Washington right now at APO.
Oh, no, I have not, so.
He called this morning, he was heading to, uh, Capitol, so.
Okay.
He's got meetings today.
So he was having some issues with Senator Smith's office, so I had somebody make the call to see if we can get that.
Yeah, things looked very good until the end of September, uh, we were in bills that did not pass, so. You would like to think that those bills would stay intact when they come back here, you know, hopefully in a couple more weeks before November seventeenth, and that's at least a starting point, but as difficult as it was even to get the continuing resolution, you know, this time goes on, hope fades, but, um, everybody seemed to really like our project.
They'll have to get a speaker first. Commissioner Heinen, did you have something?
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up, Chris, cause I was on my, uh, to-do list to answer that, ask that question.
Yeah, so we, we don't have the agreements in place that we'd like, but, uh, at least there's been conversation, we know they've been received and, you know, people have at least discussed it amongst themselves, and so we've had, uh, correspondence with that, so.
Alright, any que- other questions for Chris while he's here? Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Alright, I'm gonna turn it over to Commissioner Heinen for the Human Services Board.
Thank you, we'll call the, the Human Services Board. At this time, approver amend the agenda, Bob, you have anything to add to this agenda?
Yes, I'd like to add one item, and that would be an update on the St. Cloud Task Force on homelessness, and Sandy would like to give an update to the board.
Okay, anything else? Anybody else?
Who for approve, who for approval of the amended agenda, Mr.? Move for approve, move for approval of the amended agenda, Mister Chair.
Second.
Get a motion in a second. Any further discussion? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Consent agenda, item one through two, what would you like to do with that?
Move for approval, Mister Chair.
Second.
Get a motion in a second. Any further discussion? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Bob, update. I'm sorry, Sandy.
Good morning.
Morning.
Well, we did, um, it looks like the city of St. Cloud has, um, decided to bring back the two thousand twenty-one Task Force on Homelessness. Um, if you recall, we did, um, have several meetings on that back in twenty twenty-one. We made recommendations, none of which seemed, um, to go any further. One of those recommendations was that there would be a regional meeting between the counties and the cities, uh, which has not happened. So the first meeting of the, um, Task Force will occur on Thursday. Um, I was invited to attend. I'm on vacation that day, so Nikki Knowles will be going in my stead for this first meeting. Um, there was some confusion over whether it was open to the public or a closed meeting, but I've been told now it is an open meeting. Um, they did not want any elected officials to attend the meeting as membership, but could attend, um, watching from the background. Um, but I will be attending, um, that meeting going forward. Not sure exactly where it's gonna go at this first meeting. They're gonna establish who's gonna be the chair, who's gonna attend the meeting, if we need to invite other members to the table.
It's ironic of how Sandy and I have been involved with this from the start over there, and then pretty soon they just only invited a few people.
I would imagine this is a result of, partially a result of the letter that was sent, would be.
I- in regards to the letter, I did receive a, a, I thought, a very nice phone call from Mayor Clace. We spent about twenty-five minutes on the phone and the nutshell of it is, is he said he agreed one hundred percent with the things that were really stated in the letter, so it was a very cordial conversation. Uh, he did share with me some of the things the city plans on doing moving forward with the private sector, so.
I'd also share that there was another homeless camp that was moved, that was in Stearns County, actually, and they did that in a much different manner. It was thought out, planned, slow, um, much different, um, situation than we had the last time. So I think we're all learning from how this all, how to work through this, I guess.
Where would those residents move to?
I'm not sure. I think they were moving to different places.
Interesting.
We were not, our staff were not involved in this, so.
Okay, anything else, Sandy?
I don't think so, unless somebody has questions.
Questions? Okay, thank you very much. Bobby, anything else?
One quick thing, if I could, Mister Chair. Bob, do we have any kind of answer yet in regards to the email situation, that there's been emails back and forth? Uh, with county employees in regards to the facility?
Thank you.
Update on that?
Yes, I wanted to do one, uh, update on that. We had referred to a form that, uh, I, I think what was being contested was a form that, uh, the meeting minutes said that I gave you a copy of that. The only difference was is that I referred to that copy of that report in my hand, so I did not uh, give a copy, and that's what the notes indicated was that, uh, I had given you all a copy of that report, and I did not.
Okay.
So that's the only change that would need to be.
Hopefully that'll clear up the email string that we've been receiving.
Okay, thanks, Bob.
Thank you. Anything else, Bob?
Nope.
Good, if that, if not, I'll adjourn at nine fifty-one. Turn it back over to the Chair, Commissioner Johnson.
Alright, uh, Monty, consider that back, Economic Partnership Administration.
Mister Chair, I, perhaps I would just defer to Commissioner Pop and Amanda on this, especially I believe Commissioner Pop, I requested that we bring this matter up, so, um, perhaps Commissioner Pop, you wanna lead off on this one? Yes, so we had a executive committee meeting for BEP, and we were discussing about, you know, the housing projects that we need to go forward with in Benton County, and as we discuss our, our money, I'm sure we got money that can be used for there for Amanda, so I met, I met with the B, with the executive committee and we discussed it, and we need, um, before we can do anything, we gotta have an employee first, because uh, Amanda's very busy right now with projects she's got going on, so that's why we're here today to see if we can get the hundred, you know, some money to go towards a salary position from either the, the housing stipend that we got or the ARPA money.
Okay. Amanda, you wanna come to the podium and let's have some discussion? You wanna add anything to that, or?
Thank you, Mister Chair, um, Board of Commissioners, um, yes, so we are, um, very busy right now with several different projects across county. I'm working on nine different ones, um, and they're all economic development projects. And so, um, and just recently, we had a, um, our intern, uh, resigned from her position, so uh, we are left with myself managing all these projects, and then, um, knowing that the housing, uh, you know, the housing projects are, um, kind of at the forefront of our discussion now, um, I'm gonna need a little bit more help just to kind of get that off the ground and moving forward. Um, I've recently had conversations with the, um, city partners, and that was on October eleventh, and, uh, we had really, really good discussions, and we have several projects, um, across the county that I think are gonna be um, really exciting, uh, moving forward, um, but it's gonna, it's gonna be, uh, a process, and it's also going to take some quite a bit of time to get those projects moving forward, in addition to the, um, other projects that I'm working on right now, so. Um, I think Commissioner Pop is, uh, alluding to, we need an additional staff person, and our budget is very limited um, right now with the things that we have going on, and, uh, so I think Commissioner Pop is requesting that we use some of those ARPA dollars for the administration of, um, some of those housing programs and projects.
So Amanda, I'll just share with you what I'm thinking out loud here and see how this fits into your. Uh, Monty, correct me if I'm wrong, but our affordable housing aid is a continual aid that comes each year.
It's obviously the legislature could always. But, uh, it's a more long-term source of funding, yes, and we should get the first, we will get the first installment in December. And then annually thereafter.
So I guess my thinking process is, is that to get us out of the gate today, we, we move this housing aid from the county to BEP, and you do what you need to do with it to manage BEP, okay? I, I think we need more discussion on ARPA, and I'm not saying that there may be not gonna be some ARPA dollars coming that way, but I don't know that we're there yet. There's a lot of things that haven't been talked about. And there's considerable money to be spent yet, obviously, but I, I think maybe it would be a good start to get the housing aid to you. We have nobody in-house that's gonna manage this, these dollars anyway, so let's get them off to BEP and let BEP figure out how they're gonna run with those dollars. Is that fair?
I think that's fair. I, um, um, I think that will help us jumpstart the housing, um, piece of it. I mean, we have this housing study that we recently completed, and there's a lot of really good information in there that we can move forward, and we're set to, to really push forward on the housing issue that we have in our county, so.
You know, in this case, we're looking, uh, just shy of a hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars and twenty-three of housing aid.
Mister Chair.
Commissioner Hynan.
Monty, can we use a lot of that then for what Amanda wants to use it for?
Yeah, you know, Mister Chair, one thing I, I think I've mentioned this to Amanda, is that is, as I've read through the guidance on this, it, it needs to be directed to a court's affordable housing. And affordable generally means, uh, housing for individuals out of below a certain income threshold. So we wanna make sure, you know, we understand clearly those, those thresholds, and that's what we're working towards, because I, as I understand, too, we need to provide an annual report to, I think it's Minnesota Housing Finance Agency, on how these resources are used. So we just wanna make sure again, we're addressing housing for individuals that are, again, at a below the income thresholds that are specified in, in the law. Um, so, and I, and I think I also, uh, pointed out maybe to Amanda, is we certainly can use ARPA dollars for the administration of ARPA-qualified projects, too. We can do that, yeah, yeah.
So out of this hundred and twenty thousand, can we use, the, can Amanda and BEP use this for administrative costs?
Yes, yes, yes.
I think that's my point.
Yeah.
And then let's have further discussion when we have a committee to hold with ARPA.
Right, what we're gonna do move.
And BEP's needs are gonna be.
Yeah, and that's gotta happen sooner than later.
It, it does, because we've got a lot of things hanging out there.
And I, and I should just add, too, you know, again, I, I don't believe within our, our county, we have the administrative capacity to manage these resources. We don't have the in-house expertise. We don't do housing. That's really been not a county function.
Well, as long as the administrative part of it qualifies.
Right, yeah, yeah.
And I would, I would think with all the emphasis that's on housing, whether we seen it yesterday or with MICA, that it's gonna be going. They would have considerable pushback if they took this away in the near future. You know, unless we get a real budget crunch at the state and we know how they operate.
That could tend to drive it right, if there's a massive recession and, and huge downfall in, in state revenues. That's true, you're right.
But we did hear yesterday that they're coming in above projected levels.
I can just say that if I may, may, Mister Chair, there's one other condition that's associated with these resources, that if you don't spend them within four years after you originally received them, you must return unspent balances. So you've got four years to spend the resources you get.
So, Monty, what would be a clear motion then to be able to get those dollars to BEP?
Well, I believe there probably should be some form of agreement between the county and BEP regarding the administration of these funds, and how they're gonna be used, and the objectives, and so on and so forth. So I would just say today would be perhaps consensus or direction to, uh, develop an agreement with BEP to utilize these resources for, for qualified housing projects.
That work for BEP, Amanda?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, and there's been so many grants out there. There's so many grants for this housing.
There is, yeah.
Unlimited grants.
That's what you said.
Yeah.
The other day, that there's, you know, this would just be a small amount of things that we might be able to work with.
Does this give us a good start?
It certainly does, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Should we just?
We have consensus on it. Commissioner Pop?
So I believe that you'd like to find somebody sooner than later to get this off the ground.
Correct, yep. It would be really nice to kind of enter into agreement, um, somewhere in the very near future, um, so we can get some of this stuff going, cause we have a lot of really great discussions going on with the, the city partners right now, and, um, a lot of really great projects that we wanna move forward with.
Mister Chair, so Amanda's BEP thought about looking at a consultant or somebody to help out with this at first?
Certainly is within our wheelhouse to look at a consultant to help us, um, I think, um, you know, that's an option, and we're just kind of exploring the ideas right now and, um, to help with staffing to support all these projects.
Sandy, go ahead.
Uh, so at our executive committee meeting that we had, we talked about that, Commissioner Hynan, and we did, you know, we talked about the consultant, but we think, not that we wouldn't be entertaining that, but we think long-term future for BEP in Benton County, it would be nice just to have a staff member versus a consultant, but not saying that we're not open to that.
I, I would agree with you on Sandy. Long-term, it'd be ideal to have an employee, but short-term, it might be efficient to have a consultant at first to get it up and going. Just something to throw out there, that's all.
And we'll certainly look at that. I know, um, just in, you know, the, if you look at, towards the future, housing isn't, the housing issues aren't gonna go away in the next five years, right? It's gonna be ongoing, and we have, um, several projects across the county that could use some assistance and to get off the ground, and it's just, it's gonna be an ongoing issue. We have a need for thirty-six hundred housing units across all different product types, and it's just, um, it's not going to be solved in the next year or two or five, so.
They haven't solved it in the last twenty years, so.
Yeah, so.
So Amanda, does the timing of the consensus of getting the agreement put together work for your short-term needs? I guess it was, or do we need to get it, or, I mean, do we need to have some ARPA discussion sooner than later, too? I, I'm just trying to help. I, I need to understand completely what you need.
So, so I'm already prepared, um, to, uh, advertise for a position. I'm already prepared for that.
Yeah.
Um, and so it's really the contract timing, so whether or not we can pull together a contract and agreement with the county and BEP and get that moving, and, um, it's really, that's the timing that I'm looking for, but as far as advertising for a position, um, already prepared to do that.
Okay, Monty?
My thought is, if, if the position is, it might perhaps get drawn into other non-housing related projects at BEP, it might be advisable that it's funded with a combination of these dollars and also BEP's own resources. That way we won't have a problem. If, if we have to do reporting, we have to show how this position spent its time. You know, if it's doing non-housing things, then we won't have a problem. So you might wanna consider, you know, what would be, as I could see inevitably, it might get drawn into functions other than just housing. You know, as, as, as you have projects that come up that are necessary, in other words, you wouldn't wanna have this housing box around this position and say, that's all you can do.
Correct.
That is absolutely all you can do. In other words, you don't want the funding to be the tail of a waxed dog.
Right.
Um, so you might wanna think about, can you combine it with some BEP resources to, to give yourself some flexibility?
It certainly will.
Yeah.
And again, I'm thinking out loud, but maybe a formal request in the near future about ARPA dollars.
Okay, yeah, and I'm, um, I'm waiting for information from our partner cities on their projects, um, and their return on investment um, components for each one of their projects, and once I have that information, I will, um, share that with.
But that, this is a great example of the ARPA things that's loose out there that we need to start wrapping up.
Yeah, and we know we have, um, a short period of time before, you know, to dedicate those funds, but I think we can do it.
We're down to fourteen months, pretty much.
Right.
Yep.
Mister Chair, so Amanda, even on some of your projects you're working on, I know one in particular, their concern is about housing, you know? So you, I mean, you can tie that to a project that, you know, this project may not happen if we don't show that we are adequately working on housing.
That is correct.
You could tie it with some other projects that, that she's actually working on. I, you know, I don't want in particular that you talked about, that, that's one of their, their holdups is, we don't have any housing in, in this area.
Mister Chair, so added, Commissioner Pop, going off on that, does that mean we'd have other partners then, involved, too?
Potentially.
Okay.
Potentially.
I, I just don't want Benton County to do all the, do everything. I, I want partners involved.
Yes, and, and that's the goal, is to have partners involved, especially when we're utilizing such great resources.
Alright, so we have some consensus on the housing dollars. Let's talk in the near future about some ARPA requests.
Yep, absolutely.
Anything else?
I have nothing else for you.
Anything else, Sandy?
No, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, are we back to Commissioner meeting these days?
Sure, and I'll finish.
Commissioner, Commissioner Johnson, right?
Yeah, right. So we had, this is for Mister Johnson's, uh, benefit, we had the Rum River One Water One Plan, um, projects that are there. We actually, um, put a bunch of money into where the Rum River starts way up in Morrison County. There was a facility there that had, uh, two poultry barns, and they were looking to put a one of the stack and slabs up, and it didn't meet some of the requirements of NCRS. So, the, they came to the Rum River One Water One Plan, and, uh, two hundred and seventy-some thousand dollar project, and we put ninety-two thousand in that, and we really had some pushback from some of the partners, uh, downstream. As close to Anoka, you know, where it flows into Mississippi, and when it was all said and done between, uh, uh, he's on the Soil and Water Board, Dale Schall, and myself, and that, like, you know, I, I went back to the to the, when we had the Elk River Water Board, you know, and one of the members on there told the, the Sherburne County people, oh, you want dirty water, it's common. You know, it flows downhill, people, and when it was all said and done, it, it passed, I think, on a fifteen to two vote or something to give them. So there is things that actually was, you know, one of the first things that came about from the Rum River, um, the, the board now that oversees the projects, this is one of the first ones that came that, you know, and not everybody was in agreement. But when we explained, you know, I mean, we, we had all kinds of questions about, well, how come these farmers just pile the manure and who's monitoring if they spread it, you know, and I don't know who he was from, from, I think it was from Canavac County, said, well, they don't waste it, it's money, you know, it's, and so the whole thing, but I thought the process worked very good, so I'm, I'm happy about that.
Did they talk about, because it didn't qualify for equip money through NCRS?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So, um, you know, I think the process may, does work after you get through, you know, forty different meetings and get to that point.
Lot of administrative costs. Commissioner Hynan?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, well, other than having a District Five meeting yesterday, which was very interesting, of course, once again, Career Solutions, uh, and then I had two other meetings that I could not attend because of personal matters. But getting back to Career Solutions, they talked about, uh, the Kent closing. Monty, did, uh, did Tammy Berry give you a call yet about setting up? Okay, she'll be giving you a call to see if we have space, uh, to set up a, uh.
Job fair?
Thank you, job fair, correct, or anywhere in the, in the, in the town to set up a little jo- one-day job fair for the Kent food employees, just to give you a heads up. I, I told her to give you a call. She actually asked me if we had space, and I said we have limited space.
Do you know if she's talked to Amanda about that?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
They've been working in partnership.
Yeah, okay.
Cuz I think Amanda's aware of it. She, if she's aware of it, you know, they're having, I think they're gonna have one at, with the Foley School this year. I think Amanda's.
So those two have been working in partnership with this.
And then the Sock Rapids one is really good.
Yeah.
I mean, just fantastic one in Sock Rapids.
Okay.
And and then what, we're, we're having issues with Career Solutions cuz it's a joint power board, and there's two commissioners from Foley, uh.
Foley.
From Benton, I know, Foley, here we are, you know, and two from Stearns County, and we have a lack of commitment and people uh. Uh, committing to and letting everybody know if they're gonna make the meetings or not, so in January, Monty, we're gonna be asking for an alternate. For those boards for both Benton County and.
Both counties they're gonna ask for?
Both counties, correct, and Stearns. There is a lack of commitment. That's all I have, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Schlangen?
Um, I went to the. Gathering of the village, and it was all they're working with the college students and getting them interested in. Different jobs, and they had um, and there's, start with the high school with the epic, and then there's a. Lion man that has evidence, his decision-making, and then there's a group that works with children and babies and. So it was a pretty interesting day. There's lots of young people around. And then, yeah, the head of Career Solutions. Mind and Township maybe. And the District Five, I think. I think that's pretty close to the end. I thought there was one more, but I couldn't find that one.
All right, thank you. Uh, mine are pretty quick here. Of course, we had our GLT call a few weeks ago. Uh, we had a lot of good discussion about layout and saw some three D ideas on the building, so that was. Good. I was invited um by Cheryl Pick uh to the Foley Schools for their Farm to School Day. Very interesting, a very good show up. The food was excellent.
What was that?
It's called Farm to School, so we're buying product from local farmers like uh Brad Shmuleski down here, you know, broccoli and cauliflower. Carrot, I mean, all these different things, local beef, local, you know, so it was an excellent program. Department Bag was there. Uh, I really appreciated the invite. I I got a lot out of that. And as Chris mentioned, uh, him and I and Representative Schultz will be at the Gilman City Council meeting tonight, talk about their projects, so that's all I had. Any other uh comments by commissioners, concerns?
One meeting, it was the one at McKinley where they had the job fair for the students there.
Okay, thank you.
There was a good turnout for that.
Any other comments? All right, Monty, set committee of the whole.
You're invited to the GSDC All-Investor Meeting and Innovation Awards Event, November sixteenth, eleven thirty AM. At the New Harvester Square Event Facility on East Saint Germain. It's Thursday, November sixteenth at eleven thirty. They do ask for registrations. At this point, uh, is, is anyone able to commit if you'd like to attend?
I can't, we got Tri County. We got Tri County that morning. Probably not, but we'll see how long.
Um, I'll plan it.
Commissioner Schlangen is a yes, okay, and we'll check with Commissioner Pinsky when he returns.
Put me on that too, for now.
Commissioner Heinand as well, okay, register for Commissioner Heinand. The AMC Drainage Conference is coming up February seventh and eighth at Arrowood Conference Center Alexandria, February seventh and eighth. Uh, anyone interested in attending this year?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Put Jared down too.
That's a five.
As you always do, Beth, will you please include the cancellation date on the hotels for us? Thank you.
Five for five, okay. Two more?
Two more.
I'd like to get on your calendars a final budget levy review. Uh, discussion of elected official salaries and potential fee schedule changes. I wanted to propose to you December eleventh or December twelfth, that's a Monday or Tuesday, December eleventh or December twelfth.
Can we do this in November or?
Excuse me?
November.
You know, historically, and I think it's a good practice, is you don't really have that final discussion until after your truth and taxation meeting.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, it's, it's a good sequence, yeah.
Eleventh or twelfth, you said?
Eleven to the twelfth.
I block off Tuesdays myself every week, just for the board.
So Tuesday to twelfth, you're thinking?
Tuesday to twelfth at?
Eight thirty, Commissioner Pop?
Eight thirty?
Nine, nine, nine o'clock.
Twelve, twelve, at?
Nine.
Did you say nine?
Nine.
Nine, okay. Okay, also, uh, Chris, county engineer, has requested a committee of the whole to discuss various highway issues, um, cuz you have some suggested dates there for us.
Um, yeah, I I guess sooner than later, is there time in November?
Um, how long you need, Chris? Two hours or?
I think so, yeah. I think we may be discussing, you know, next year's road projects, Gilman being one of them, so it'd be nice just to be able to say even tonight that, yeah, we plan on discussing it in the near future, so.
Um, how about, do we, what do we have on our next board meeting on the seventh, Monty? Anything that you're aware of?
Our next board meeting is the seventh, yes.
Anything that you're seeing it's extended or that you know?
We'll have the ditch authority, there's a hearing that day for ditch six.
Okay.
Be the sixth?
I can't the sixth.
Okay, do we wanna stay after the ditch authority?
You know, as far as I'm concerned, I would just soon stay here.
Okay.
And just do it afterwards.
Monday the seventh, after the ditch.
So upon conclusion of ditch authority, have a a highway.
Tuesday the seventh?
Yeah.
You're here anyway.
On the seventh, okay.
Beth, Commissioner Schlangen, does that work for you?
Eleven oh seven, upon after, after ditch, okay.
Do that, Chris?
Yep, okay, yep.
Are you bringing lunch? That was for you, that was for you, Chris.
I'll have something catered in.
A big bowl, a big bowl of bouillab, perhaps?
Ooh.
I'm expecting a little better than that. I'm sorry, not that I don't like.
I'll take some bouillab.
And that's all we have, Mr. Chair.
All right. Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion second to approve our calls is presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it's carried. We are adjourned at ten fourteen.